The other thing is that they still won't qualify for top rush for the food stamps. And I know that the state has a willing to remove that piece. So we'll see what happens. More to come on that because I don't know. That's in the next year's, you know.
Is that anything? So it's not, they're not trying to get that through the next two days?
I don't think so. No, no, no. It's still kind of going on Friday.
If it's not done by Friday, it's not.
Is it in for Friday or is it?
I can find out today.
And then on the federal lawsuit side, relax. I completely understand what you're saying about the professional agents that are going to be receiving. But there was yet to be determined whether or not the federal lawsuit already applied to the counties. Do you know if that's been?
No, they haven't determined that yet.
Okay, so again, we're getting everybody back. The process is starting with all these open-ended questions, very big open-ended questions still out there. Such as, does the federal judge know if I'd counties? We don't know. And A, you know, where's the funding coming from for all these programs that we have to, and all the services we have to provide? A lot of this still.
It's just a simple fact that I think they were trying to get rid of the litigation.
Well, right, put it on that, put it on that.
Just one other question, kind of echoing to other marshals concerned. You're sending a person over, Elizabeth's sending a person over, Bill's sending a person over, Kay's sending a person over. And I'm sorry, but do we just constantly hear where we're over, where we're understaffed? Start with, you know, from a variety of departments.
That was good.
But what happened to backfill all these? Now we're all going to move somebody for, if I understood you correctly, this is like, maybe not 24/7, but it's open. And I don't really understand it. Are they got all set up an appointment or it's just supposed to be walk-in? And if the door's not open and the light's on, then it's really not a walk-in service?
The idea is very well, we'll be full-time for everybody. And I think Elizabeth was saying the other point, 2.5 FTE. Ours will be a full-time FTE. Bill was looking at what he could squeeze out somewhere between 2.5 and a 1.0 FTE, as I recall our discussions in trying to bring this together. And right now, we're already providing those services. The problem is we're providing them in different areas. And because they come to one shop, they don't always go to the next shop where they need it. If we have it in one place, the idea is hopefully we'll be able to give them everything there and help them again and then move on. So right now, they may come to my shop, but I send them over to Bill's shop, they don't go. Or if I send them to Elizabeth to get help, you know, economic help, they don't go. So they, right now, this would put everything in one place.
Understood. I'm just trying to get, understand the process. You're there full-time, you're staff in this thing. So when somebody walks through the door, they get on the phone to the other departments and they send somebody over.
I would act as if we would have predetermined hours for the, maybe one of ours to know, hey, on this day you're going to apply to services, or you can go down to the shop if it's like, come in emergency. It was that kind of thing. But we'll have sets scheduled.
Do you all have this worked out before? Then John is also now in our CCP meeting.
Well, they probably did, right. I just don't know.
Right, yeah, we don't offer, we can't all participate in CCP meetings. So I'm assuming, now, the system requires approval of this. We've got the CDP board, correct? What do they?
Yes, the CCP board, approved by the by-passes.
They've approved this design of this program?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear that part. I'm sorry. I'm just going to be open to it, so.
So, I realize this is probably take care, but I'm not getting it. Is there a neon sign on the freeway between the Crowley's lease point and here as to how do they know where to go and what time?
They, well, the whole idea is when they get released, and I'll give you an example, like we had one release Sunday. He was instructed to report probation at 10:00 AM on Monday morning. Obviously, he did not report, we didn't shoot him off. When they report though, we've been pretty lucky, most of them have reported. When they report, we then tell them at our end, this is what's available, this is where you go, this is what's expected. Whether they get dressed, testing three times a week, and get the scene three times a week, or random checks, or whatever. As well as where they get services, what time they get services, and where they get services after hours.
Okay.
Is that?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I understand. We kind of know, and you know, we're not, so I can't, I clearly can't.
Move by the board.
Hi, everyone.
Okay.
How many potential clients do you think that this is? What's your asking of this one?
We have them between the SB 678, where funding is half on 678, half on 809. We're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 that would be eligible. Right. And it's strictly for the Delton side, that the population were working in Williams, the supervisor, Marshall, Community Center for the Jubilee Side. Actually, Lalo and Sarah are working on that in SB 678. So this is strictly the Delton side of us.
Can I suggest that you guys have CCP board and probation have a clear path communication with the media as to what's going on and the center and when people are in the numbers, or people can release the numbers so that the public actually knows what's going on. I think that's really lacking because I don't think people realize, I mean, even we are trying to measure the numbers when the numbers change and the lease numbers change on a monthly basis. So I, I think we need to come up with some type of public information hub, whether it's on our website or directly through the, or we take advantage of our website, you can rely on that. And then people can use that as a constant source of getting updates. I mean, as a resident, I want to know what's going on.
We'll put that on our CCP agenda. I think the next one's October 16th, if I recall.
I really would like to get all community contact on the website as to what is happening and what's going on.
I'm a little surprised to hear your figure of 300 people.
Well, that's what the other information.
That's with SB 678 and the Delts. So it really encompasses all, most of the Delton probationers, the Delton probationers is what it covers. It doesn't just cover the 109.
Okay. Move by the board. Move by Drew.
One, last question. Was the?
I'll second.
Was the, was the Los Harbor building in Massawa considered as a location?
We, no, and we thought we were looking at Closer Wings being more central areas for this population. And because Elizabeth's shop and Bill's shop and my shop are all, the DA shop, the court, everything is right there. So if they, even when they go into court, they get out of court, they're right there, they don't have to drive, we don't have loss of time.
The other discussion.
The last comment. Can you make a comment that one of us can't speak on that?
I said all of us can't. I said all of us can't. Only the marksman at work.
And I understand this lease is month-to-month, even though it's a three-year lease, it's a month.
Correct.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O, item B. Consider approving agreement between County Police Probation Department and County Human Allocation Facility for Board and Care Minors effective August 31st. Effective through August 31st, 2014, with terms and conditions set forth in the agreement. And authorize the Chief Probation Officer to sign on behalf of the board.
Currently, if you will call me, the last board meeting, we have Yuba and Glenn that we use for detention. We also periodically use Trinity for more of a camp community placement. They have a treatment facility there where they draw down dollars from Board of State Committee Corrections. And we use them periodically, case by case. They've been charging us $75 a day. What I did was talk to the Chief Probation Officer and ask him to put that in writing. And he continued to do that. And the main reason being, we couldn't have the Pre-Language Prisoner Elimination Act in, you know, any other way if we didn't have an ongoing contract with them. So it would just be, it's not that we pay, we only pay as we use it. It's not that we have to pay, you know, like we do with Glenn and Yuba, where we actually have reserved beds no matter what, whether we have somebody in there or not. So this was really just get Prisoner Elimination Act in it at the same cost of kind of when we can need it.
No further approval.
Move by Marshall. Second by Carter, needs to go. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury? Carter, Van, Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye. Thank you. 945, item, County Library. Consider approving a memorandum of understanding between the County Police Library and the Woodland Community College to provide library services for college students at the Williams Library Branch, effective August 28, 2012, with terms and conditions set forth in the MLU, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Good morning, County.
Good.
This agreement is, we've been talking with the outreach center and Dean of Operations, and we're looking at it about how we could provide services for students in the area where there is not at this point a facility at the outreach for the students to have library services. And as we talked about this, we covered that exchange of services where they would provide collection and free access to their computer software so that we could check items that they have on the course circulation and also on reserve, with some secondary classes used in the structural textbooks or other supplemental materials that are being used in the library. And so they would be providing that type of access for their students. We would provide, be providing shelf space for about 500 books that could circulate and kind of books that would be on reserve in the morning and at night. The books that would gain to us that would be either circulated to the students and also being able to circulate to the general population. And so that is a plus for us to give us a little bit more depth selection at the Williams Library in social sciences, math, English, and science. And I think also through the door, as I know that we have a need of art provider for more materials that would support the training we're taking for our services. And I'm hoping we can expand a little bit within that door. There's really an exchange next year, this is just an exchange of services. They are looking into a large grant that would allow them to provide additional staff we have to reserve to enhance the access there, the greatest numbers, it depends on the revenue.
So the college is open to that?
Yes.
And through that, and the other departments?
Yes, that's true.
Second, move by Van, second by Marshall.
And you know, we've, over past years, we've tried to develop a better relationship with the public. And I think we've made great strides in that area. And this is yet another one. We've even had discussions about relocating our library in the Williams branch out near the college and educate and also educate facilities. So hopefully someday in the foreseeable future, we'll do that.
One of the things that we are hopeful is that this will establish a collective collection that helps to, with the nature of some grants that we've been looking at high for. And we are having discussions along those lines at this time.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O, item B. Consider approving agreement and grant of easement between the County Police and CBIAM LLC to provide CDI and easement with in and leave rights over and across the county property located at 738 Market Street, the library and school building. To install, own, and maintain an underground conduit of fiber cable for health communications facilities and equipment for multi-county transmission system, which was funded with federal era broadband infrastructure award effective August 28, 2012, with terms and conditions set forth in the agreement. Grant of easement authorized the chairman to sign and Director Clark to report the same.
This is a project study that two providers, but we're sending provides to the education services and other education services to the state colleges. It was applying for the American Freedom Act grants to, to develop high-speed internet access to, who is that? 15 counties from third county coming up to this county. And basically, set the number over to the CIRs. And we, as, as a part of that, they have really committed to connect that broadband access to the superintendent of schools in each county and to the main library in each county. And so this is, what they're looking to do is like, they're building a new building and a toll company that we wanted to kind of go aside, you know, a setup on the site to make a arrangement, they look into their library. They are trying to bring fiber circuits into, into the building so that service can be provided. They're also committed to carrying that service over to the school side, doing the transition when they're there. So I've tried to get other people to bring this because I don't know that I have any of this stuff yet. But I've got a little bit of support here. So if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them.
Great. Are these new lines going to be accessible to any other facilities in the county?
No. I've asked that question in the past meetings and we've been focused on just putting in this circuit to the Office of Education and libraries. And they really haven't given any information as far as what it would take for, for example, our county to connect into that. And if there's going to be a cost.
So they weren't even going to answer the question?
I've, I've met with them, sent them emails, and I haven't gotten any replies back. I don't think they know, yeah, what they're going to do.
Just from a technical standpoint, from just your opinion, looking at what the actual part, part of the wire is, I mean, is there capacity there for?
Yeah, there is, there's a, there's a huge capacity pipe that they're putting in. I think it's like a gigabit. It's a, it's a very large bandwidth.
I mean, I'd love to approve this, I mean, I know how important this is. But I'd like to address the issue of, you know, long-term connection options for other facilities, whether it's private, you know, private business, wanting to pay and become part of it. Because that's always an issue, especially a lot of our larger producers. Or whether it's the county being able to get access to this. I mean, we did this 15 years ago and still don't have access to a lot of those lines.
Yeah. It has to do with the physical route?
Right.
That is coming through the Cloosa and how do you actually get to that from, you know, anywhere? And that's information.
I mean, they won't give you a route map?
Well, yeah, they give, I think they have a route map. But as far as details of, you know, how do we get from my building to that? And is there going to be a cost to that? And what that cost is going to be? No information.
Is there a representative from CDI in here?
There is not one here today. I believe that the focus of the grant ability seems to be what they call the middle mile grant. So it does not necessarily also to the inside. And I think that in the discussions that they have initially that we would maintain was that it would be a private partner who would be able to provide that last mile, that last connection from the main pipe over to, I think, they must have run connected.
Right, yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the middle mile program. Now, is, are they, what's your name, Chica? Are they involving this at all?
It's not directly. It's a similar, I guess, system that they're putting in. But they're kind of nearing their same type of facilities, basically.
Could you request that we, we'll move over to the following agenda and have CDI in here?
Yes.
What is their attitude? Is it a take it or leave it type attitude? Okay, I'd like them here to probably approve this with more detail, including the full middle mile route map. And that's not under the law securities, which you can do by the way. I'm going to tell you that. I really would like them, I'd love to approve this. And I'd love to, you know, take the next step. But I think we should probably.
The primary contact that I have, the one you mentioned, Thomas, it's from the government, the government that we're at, the York City, and CDI, I think the primary contact is CDI.
What's the name of the other?
Thomas, who is, this person who has a name that's from the city, who's the, the central education.
It's SEDIC, it's S E D I C, yes, okay. Yeah, Tom is probably something to hear from. We had, I mean, a comment, but he's probably a good CDI answer. As long as we're putting it off to discussing, I'm sure, but don't.
What do you think of that?
You'll schedule with that, I agree, agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe that'll cause your reliance again, if you guys go over to work.
Okay, 945, item, County Council Veteran Service. Consider approving contract between County Police and Veteran Services and Elizabeth Regional Medical Center and Health Fair for outreach for the Closer County Veterans, effective October 25th, 2012, with terms and conditions set forth in the contract, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Vote for approval.
Move by Marshall.
Aye.
Second by Carter. In discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter? Van?
Aye.
Marshall? And Evan?
Aye, S5O, item 945, Public Works. Consider adopting a resolution of the county for supervisors authorizing the installation of stop signs on King Street at the intersection with 9th Avenue. Then the unincorporated County Marble will authorize the chairman to sign. Morning minutes, move by stop signs on the Marble.
This is the backside of the old address, children in Marble. It's King Street and 9th. If you've been in the back of this school, you'll see there's a huge building in the old, recent years. Very strange intersection, it's an confused angle there, on-site. So we'll have to look at that, and look at the methods to do a stop sign and not have it too unusual. So we've figured out how to make that happen. We have later, later in your agenda, there's a contract with Chris Cuffey that we issued through our department, through the, what we'll do is it's come back with a modification, a small amount to, to the department's writing, but association with a stop sign should approve it. So you think it's, first of all, that first amendment, it will definitely make the school happy and create some issues.
I will.
Move by Van, second, second by jury, needs to go.
Make sure that thing is delivered first. Or you have a CHP parked by it because it will be run like crazy.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is load pilot highway control and we'll just put some brighter reflective, like a sheet around the pole and put that stop sign out prominently. We'll need to restrict parking in that daycare area because one of the issues is the parking there blocks the intersection. So there's a couple of things we need to do. So hopefully that works, if I have a plan.
Thank you, Jim.
Roll call.
Next one, supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O, item B. Consider accepting and awarding bids for the master job board contract to provide tree service on an as-needed basis as received and opened on August 15, 2012. As follows, Richards Tree Service, West Coast Arborist, George Linus Tree Preservation, and M&amp;S Wesley Tree Service.
The chair on the agenda requests some towing services that should be changed.
Yes. The type over in the agenda, that's not a notification.
End of the board line.
Evan, Evan, I see.
Oh, we were pulling trees out there.
Yeah, just pulling, dragging those trees, right?
This is just like our other job board contracts. Any good things?
I'll need to, yeah.
Second.
Move to accept by Carter, second by Van. Let's go. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O. And see, consider approving master job board contract to provide tree service on an as-needed basis between the County Police Department and the following, Richards Tree Service, West Coast Arborist, George Linus Tree Preservation, and M&amp;S Wesley Tree Service, effective August 28, 2012 through August 31, 2013, with terms and conditions set forth in the contract, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Right, so they're accompanying contract with them to decide.
Move by and jury. Second by Carter, in discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O, item B. Consider accepting and awarding the bid to the master job board contract to provide towing services on an as-needed basis as received and opened on August 15, 2012. As follows, Sellers Incorporated and Sanders Heavy Towing.
That's why I said it correctly, for towing.
And vote for approval.
Move by Marshall. Second by Van, in discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evan?
Aye, S5O. Consider approving the, by the means of approving master job board contract to provide towing services on an as-needed basis between the County Police Department and the following, Sellers Incorporated and Sanders Heavy Towing, effective August 28, 2012, through August 31, 2013, with terms and conditions set forth in the contract, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Vote.
By Marshall, second by Van. Discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Aye, S5O, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with due indulgence, I have an email here that is a recognition of excellence in customer service by one of Bill's, or Jim's employees from Closer County resident. And I'll read just shortly, and this is in regards to Gary Shon's, Public Works IT division. And I won't read the whole thing, but in part it reads, he was very kind and demonstrated patience with my review and questions. When a county employee steps up and seeks to provide the information and very positive, helpful, and timely manner, the individual on their partnership acknowledged or at least recognized. So I will give you this email. And if you would recognize Mr. Shon's for his excellent customer service and he would be a good sign.
Thank you. Okay, 10 o'clock, Health and Human Services. Consider approving an agreement between the County Police Health and Human Services and the Sioux Row to provide county and faculty education services effective August 28, 2012. On our agenda is through September 1, 2012. It's written in an amount not to exceed $25,000 with a 15-day written termination clause by either party and authorize the chairman to sign.
Good morning. And this position, as far as supporting this contract, supporting tobacco, within the last year, due to staffing capacity issues for our agency, this program kind of got pushed to the wayside. And we're coming here now to get tobacco compliance, with getting out outreach and facilitating groups and updating information about the tobacco situation for our program. We're supposed to have a council through the tobacco programs and we need to kind of reevaluate that going again. And Sioux Row has to do that. The other thing, I don't anticipate this taking a year to complete. I do guess that this will be serviced within the next six months.
Why can't you just, I just have your contract?
Um, just the capacity, you get caught up. Um, just the capacity to get caught up, we just, we only have one staff person assigned to this program, and she just can't do it all by herself, you get caught up totally.
So instead of hiring?
Again, I don't want to hire.
Right, I don't care, that's a good, that's a good way to say hiring, another person should actually be there.
But ultimately, you're caught up, the one person can't, it's a program situation.
And I appreciate that.
Then I would assume this brow would have the expertise to administer this program?
Yeah, because she has the, uh, relationships with the community and facilitation skills to, um, to manage a council, to get it going, and then our staff person can then partner with her, and, um, plus.
Moved by Van. Second by Carter. Roll call.
Supervisors in the jury?
Aye.
Carter and Van, aye. Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, pass five oh, and oh five item, on extension, California State Fair. If, uh, this is what way it should read, um, consider approving addendum to contract twelve, acts one sixty-three, between the county and Closer County, services in association with the design of the Closer County Exhibit at the California State Fair, amending paragraph one, one services to be performed, and paragraph three compensation is set forth in the amendment with all other terms and conditions to remain in full force effective, authorize the chairman
I'll go for approval.
Moved by Marshall, second by Inbury, any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors in the jury?
Aye.
Carter and Van, aye. Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, pass five oh, and D, consider approving addendum to contract twelve, acts one sixty-three, between the county and Closer Almetto, for services in association with the design, construction set up, periodic maintenance and destruction of the Closer County Exhibit at the California State Fair, amending paragraph three, compensation is set forth in the amendment with all return and conditions to remain in full force and effective and authorize the chairman to sign.
So.
Moved by Carter. Second by Inbury, any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors in the jury?
Aye.
Carter and Van, aye. Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, pass five oh.
Thank you, guys, you guys look great. Just share too, by the way, it's wonderful. Thank you again.
Ten ten item, appointment, Princeton Cemetery District, consider appointing Tina Elwarden to the Princeton Cemetery to develop a vacancy created by a fire, effective August twenty eighth, twenty twelve through August twenty seventh, twenty sixteen.
Right, that would be, uh, seven.
Moved by Carter, second by Van. Roll call.
Supervisors in the jury?
Aye.
Carter and Van, Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, pass five oh, top of the pen, and head, this, uh, gold, uh, eight percent item, Moved by Carter, second by Inbury.
Yeah, on number fourteen, can we be sure that the, uh, clerk sent a copy of that letter to that gentleman that did this, uh? Please, pull that out.
Roll call.
Supervisors in the jury?
Aye.
Carter and Van, aye. Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Um, can, um, Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Can we go back to the set real quick, John, on number fourteen, on, that's already gone out of the Assembly Committee, can we retract that to the government office, um, for the one that did the letter, or signed it, we, um, instead of just being addressed to the Assembly Appropriations Committee, is it okay?
We asked the meeting.
Yeah, they were, okay. Um, let's go ahead and address the letter fourteen, let's send it to the Assembly Appropriations Committee, but let's also send it to the government office, and if we pass the copy in, um...
I'm sure it's going to be all the same, it's the same team.
Just because of time, you brought it up, it's more than a third, it's a word, it's I'm happy to get it today.
No.
I, I, thank you both.
You guys are perfect. If I was Van, would you like to discuss your fire tax? At this point?
It's under our time, or?
No, this is not a time.
It's under, no, but it's going to take one minute to answer.
Okay, as most of you are aware by now, um, the, oh, you brought them, good. Oh, was that a, a good record? Okay. State, another one of its brilliant moves last year, decided to assess all quote-unquote residential structures, a, an additional fire fee, that is on top of any fee that we currently pay in our fire districts that actually come in and put out the fires. Um, the bills went out in the mail this week, but this was the first, like, heads-up your bill is coming out, and it's, is Dan here? Yeah, it's not here. Um, what's going to happen is, they are, this is directly through the Board of Equalization, so I just wanted to make sure that people in the county knew where this new fee slash tax was coming from, and it's coming directly from the state to the Board of Equalization. It's not a fee or fine or tax that the county is letting, and we have no control over this whatsoever. We have fought this daily through RCRC and CSAC to no avail. What this fee was supposed to be used for was fire, fire prevention, and eighty percent of the fee is going to be going to administration, just FYI, imagine that. Um, this is a complete, um, I'm going to use a bad analogy, but it is, um, yeah, it, that's the best way to put it, Tommy, it's just more of the same BS coming down the state. They're looking for a way to fund CAL FIRE, because they don't have enough money. The state, again, can't pay their own bills, so they're trying to push it down on the county and our residents. So, a piece of, kind of, heads-up, this is coming out, looks a tad bit hamish, because it is our one friend on the Board of Equalization got this out before the rest of the Board of Equalization got their hands on it, and it does say heads-up, um, this hundred, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per capital structure. Now, if Fats was still operating, it would be a hundred and fifty dollars per bed, just FYI, so any type of hotel, any type of structure that has multiple, um, units, Wilbur Hot Springs will be assessed a hundred and fifty dollars per person sleeping capacity. So, the goal is to generate revenue, to pay their bills, like I said, because they can't. But we are not the, um, the leading entity in this, there's still some discussion as to how this is actually enforced in the long run, so I just want to make sure this goes up on our website, on who people are supposed to contact at the state, and where they're supposed to send their concerns to, and the discussion, um, points, so we need to make sure that this goes up on the website, if it has not already, um, all the details.
This is, uh, everybody in what they call the state response area, um, well, the entire national chorus is considered state response area, they will respond there. You know, the folks up in Monty View are getting heat, you know, on the, up on Snow Mountain, as well as Go Down, but, um, the Telgen here is a property owner in this area, he will soon receive a bill requiring you to pay up to a hundred and fifty dollars per capital structure. After you receive the bill, you'll have thirty days to mete a bill to send a payment or protest the amount of the bill in writing, which I've been instructing everyone to do, and that's complicated as well. Anyhow.
There's going to be multiple lawsuits filed, um, the day the bills actually hit the mailboxes, um, so they haven't hit yet, um, but, um, several state board groups considered that a penalty would pass.
Has anyone said what the penalty is, if people just say, "We're not paying?"
We have asked the State Board of Equalization for a written response to that question over ten times, and they have not responded. They didn't write it in the bill when it was passed, and so there's some question as to whether there will be some fixed language that makes the counties responsible for that aspect of it, or whether the BOE becomes responsible under their lean capacity to do that, so then if you didn't pay your hundred and fifty dollars, State Board of Equalization are meant to be leaning in half.
And while there's still over four hundred of the clues, yeah?
Yes, and remember, the state responsibility areas aren't in the urban parts of the state, so when the large wildfires happen in, let's say, the LA area or Riverside area, those aren't state responsibility areas, so our rural areas are basically paying for a lot of these fires, and like the fires that are going on now in US Forest Service ground, that's not CAL FIRE responding or putting out these fires, this, my, a hundred percent goes to CAL FIRE.
Yeah, it started out as prevention, you know, but, no.
Yeah, it's not suppression, don't, don't misconstrue, this is not going to put more firefighters and fire trucks on fire, it's, uh, administrative fee.
If anybody wants a copy of this, we can get it from you.
The, uh, ten twenty item, personnel employee recognition, employee recognition notification honoring county employees reaching milestone years of service in the county of Closer Public Services, January one, twenty twelve, through February three, twenty twelve, clear of deception immediately following down to the board supervisor's conference room on the first floor. Good morning.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, could you please come down and talk to the students?
Oh, wow.
This is for employees that have tended thirty years of service. And then I'm going to call up the leader of each department to have them congratulate their employees on. Robert, could you please come up? This one is for Sean Davis, for ten years of service. This next one's for Mary Ann Vasquez, for ten years of service.
Look for a hook spot.
Alexandra Elguess, for fifteen years of service. Sheriff's two, one is Levano Campos, for ten years of service. And the next one is for Lori Von Bargan, for fifteen years of service.
Okay, we'll all judge for them not being here, uh, we're, a little more staff, few business things to do today.
Thank you. The next one is for Daniel Charter, for twenty-five years. Jim has two employees as well, the first one is Ronald Webb, for ten years of service. The next one is for Edward Lazarus.
Lazarus.
Lazarus, for thirty years of service. Hey, now, cover for seven.
We will reset it downstairs.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations, we have to make a case for these.
Sebastian's getting ready for the daughter's wedding on Thursday.
Hey, you, how's it going? You're very busy, right? They're good, aren't they?
Very good.
You'd never guess it.
Uh, Denise, we're going to lock up the room while everybody's on break, so you can help me step down.
Sure.
But I'll be right back, if you'd like to step there, I'm going to lock the door.
That's okay.